Good morning. I'd like to call to order the November 16, 2020 Conference and Meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Please stand for the invocation by Queen Gregory and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come as humbly as we know how, always first and foremost to tell you thank you for your goodness and your mercies that follow us all the days of our lives. As we embark upon this meeting, Lord, we ask that you cover each one of our commissioners, our Commissioner Ms. Syria Ludgood, our Commissioner Connie Hudson, and our Commissioner Randall Dewitt, Lord, as they embark on the duties of the county, that they will hold these meetings in their hearts, Lord, and that they will do things that are for the benefit of the communities and the people that reside in Mobile County. And, Lord, we won't cease to give you all the honor, praise, and glory in your Son, Jesus' name, and in agreement, we all say, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Hudson, and she will lead us in our recognition of two individuals.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Today, we are pleased to welcome two special guests who today will be receiving commendations of professional achievement and the appreciation of a grateful community for their work in public service. And I'd like to welcome this morning our Mobile County absentee election manager, Aline Barnett, and also, we have our Mobile County Superintendent of Public Schools, Kressel Threadgill. We will begin first with Aline Barnett. Join us on the first tier, and we will all distance according to guidelines.
Testing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'll tell you, if ever there was a challenge, it was with absentee elections this year. You know, even under normal circumstances, I think elections, just handling elections, and Judge Davis, who is here today, and our Circuit Clerk, JoJo Schwartzauer, they can certainly attest to that, and they know that, you know, all together, it's a team effort. But certainly, our Elections Office, our absentee office this year, was overwhelmed, to say the least. And we certainly want to thank you and show you our appreciation, and today, we have this resolution, and I'd like to read it to you. This is a commendation of professional achievement for Aline Barnett. It reads, "Whereas Aline Barnett currently serves as the Mobile County Absentee Election Manager, a position she has held for 10 years. Aline's work with the Mobile County Elections Office began in 1995, when she first served as a poll worker and later as a poll inspector. Her commitment to the voters of Mobile County, Alabama, has been steadfast for 25 years. And whereas the absentee election manager has the responsibility of obtaining ballots, processing applications for absentee ballots, sending and receiving absentee ballots, noting the names of absentee voters on the list of qualified electors, maintaining a list of absentee voters, and delivering absentee ballots to the appropriate poll workers, Aline's dedication to her responsibilities has never faltered. And whereas, as absentee election manager, Aline oversaw the processing of the highest number of absentee ballot applications in the history of Mobile County for the 2020 general election, of the 27,188 absentee ballot application requests received, 14,618 ballots were returned by way of mail carriers, 173 ballots were returned electronically, and 10,835 ballots were completed onsite at the absentee election manager's office." Wow. Whereas, Aline has been a longstanding member of the community, graduating from Murphy High School and the University of South Alabama, working for local family businesses, as well as the University of South Alabama, and supporting numerous local charities and organizations, she is also a devoted wife to husband Les, who is here today, mother of daughter Abby Davis and son H.L. Barnett, and granddaughter of four, who greatly enjoys spending time with her family. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission applauds Aline Barnett on her extraordinary dedication to the voters of Mobile County, Alabama. Furthermore, we express our gratitude and appreciation for her service to our community. Let's give her a round of applause.
Well, I just wanted to thank the commissioners and the electorate or the voting public of Mobile County. They made our job much easier. This is just an honor that I really did not expect to receive, but I do appreciate it, and I'm honored to accept it on behalf of the staff of the absentee election office and the probate court. Without those dedicated employees and just dedicated workers, this election would not have gone as well as it did. So my appreciation to them as well. Also, I would like to thank JoJo Schwartzauer, Michelle Scott, who made sure that I had food every day. Thank you, Michelle, and Judge Davis for their unwavering support. This was an unprecedented election, but we got through it together and we made it work. It was a good, clean election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We wanted to get a picture.
If we point this way, can we just? Sorry, y'all.
Next, we have another very dedicated public servant here in Mobile County that we are recognizing today, Superintendent Kressel Threadgill. Welcome, Superintendent. We're so happy to have you. And his commendation reads, "Whereas, the Mobile County Commission does hereby recognize Kressel D. Threadgill, Superintendent of the Mobile County Public School System, for his outstanding dedication, leadership, and commitment to Mobile County. Whereas Mr. Threadgill was recently named Alabama Superintendent of the Year by the School Superintendents of Alabama. He was selected by his colleagues from a list of finalists from each of the state's eight school board districts." That's great. That's wow. And whereas, his educational career has spanned more than 20 years, in which he has held almost every position from teacher and coach to principal, director of federal programs, director of curriculum and instruction, director of special education, and much more. He also has the unique distinction of serving as superintendent of both one of Alabama's smallest school systems and now the state's largest school system. And whereas, in his role as superintendent of Mobile County Public Schools, Mr. Threadgill oversees 88 schools, 52,000 students, and 7,500 employees. He has overcome many challenges that the district has never experienced before, including COVID-19 pandemic. Under his leadership, the Mobile County Public School System received national recognition for broadcasting classroom lessons for grades pre-K through 12, live on local television stations during the statewide stay-at-home order in the spring of 2020. And whereas, his innovative approach to education has moved Mobile County from a C on the state's report card to a B-, all the while, growing district leaders through New Leadership Academy and moving Mobile County Public School System toward becoming a one-on-one district with student laptops and devices. And whereas, Superintendent Threadgill has earned the respect and gratitude of his colleagues, state and local leaders, as well as the public, for his steadfast devotion to the betterment of the Mobile County Public School System. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission wishes to applaud Superintendent Kressel D. Threadgill on his most recent professional achievement. Furthermore, we extend our congratulations and best wishes to him for continued success."
It is truly an honor to be here this morning. I am both grateful and humbled to be recognized by the Mobile County Commissioners as Alabama Superintendent of the Year. As I tell many people that this award is not about me, it is about the administrators, the teachers, the support staff, the students, and our community. This award is about them and their hard work and dedication. Now, let me be clear that this award does not mean that we will stop working. This award does not mean that we will become complacent. This award means that we will, more than ever now, continue to improve and to continue to give 110% each and every day for my babies. So again, I thank the Mobile County Commissioners for this award and for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any speakers this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we do have a speaker, a representative from Altapoint Health.
Good morning, County Commissioners, and thank you for having me. I'm Turk Schlesinger. I'm with Altapoint Health, kind of here in Mobile mainly, but we do have six other counties that we serve, but not quite at the level that we serve, Mobile County, and we're certainly happy to be here and to be a solution to helping people who have mental health, substance use, and intellectual disabilities. So, thank you for having me. I do have some exciting news today. We had applied for a grant to become one of three crisis centers in the state of Alabama. We went up against 19 other service providers, and we were one of the three that were granted. Commissioner Ludgood, you, Commissioner Hudson, and former Commissioner Carl all sent letters of support, which were very strongly written and helped us get this grant. We do appreciate your help doing that. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about what this grant is and how it's going to work. So, on October 28th, we were awarded, it's not really a grant, it's a contract, it's an ongoing contract that we'll have for $7 million to provide a crisis diversion center. We also received this grant partly in participation from the Stepping Up Initiative, which Commissioner Ludgood championed, and we do appreciate you, Commissioner Ludgood, for stepping up and championing that particular committee. The Stepping Up Initiative targets individuals living with serious mental illness and substance use disorders who have frequent contact with criminal justice systems and local emergency departments. As I'm sure you're all aware, the number of individuals with mental health and co-occurring substance use disorders in our jails and emergency rooms have been on the rise for several years, and stepping up assists those individuals with staying in treatment and reducing arrests. The success of this program, along with the significant needs of our community, strengthened our application for this community crisis center, as these programs are all part of a greater continuum comprehensive service of care. So let me tell you a little bit about what this crisis center will do. This crisis center will be open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and it's going to be staffed by 90 new employees that will be brought into the Mobile County area, and those employees are going to have specialization in the areas of acute substance abuse disorders, also with mental health disorders. Also, the crisis center will allow individuals who are in crisis to just walk into this crisis center. If they have an urgent care need, it really will look like a urgent care for psychiatric and substance abuse individuals. The model also has 15, what we call, observation beds. These beds are set up for law enforcement, for emergency departments, and for walk-ins to come in and stay within a 23-hour period of time in order to stabilize their mental health and substance use disorder. And as you know, Altapoint has already 1,700 employees deployed, mostly in the Mobile area. So we have a large continuum of care. These 15 beds will be used for only 23 hours, because most of those individuals will be able to step down in other parts of our continuum of care. We'll also have five to seven beds that will be there for six lengths of stay for those people who come in but cannot be stabilized quickly. So we're very, very excited about what all it'll have. It'll also have what we would consider an outpatient detox center. Okay? So that means that we'll be able to do non-medical detox for people who have substance use disorders who are coming in. So that's just a very exciting news for us to get that contract. This contract should go into perpetuity for $7 million. We visited states like Georgia, Texas, Oklahoma, Arizona, who have these same crisis centers to find out what would be the best type of center that we could emulate ours to model after. And so we have done quite a bit of extensive research. We actually have a lot of employees who have worked in these types of centers, who've come from states, who really bring specialization in that area. I'm not the guy who has all the clinical specialization, but we have plenty of employees who specialize in this and who are going to help us with this. So that's a part of our new news. We do have an existing building that we'll be using on an interim basis to start up, starting March 1st. We're also certainly talking with Sam Cochran, Sheriff Sam Cochran, also with Chief Patiste, about how the criminal justice system, how law enforcement will all interact with this particular center. We're also having meetings with all of the hospital administrators and their emergency room staff to see how we can divert people into this center instead of coming into the emergency rooms, especially with COVID right now. You know, not having mental health crisis going on in emergency rooms where they really don't need to be, they need to be in a treatment center will help with the crisis that's going on with COVID also. So anyway, we have a temporary building that we're building now. We are going to, we actually have drawings, we had to submit drawings for a brand-new state-of-the-art center that we're going to build, which will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $10 million in total cost, and we'll be looking for two things. We'll be looking first for land to build this on, that'll give us the best proximity to the utilizers who are going to be coming in, and also, we'll have to get around $7.5 million or so for the construction of the new facility. So we'll be looking for those types of supports. I know Huntsville has gotten a $2.1 million local allocation from their cities and counties to help them with their build. It's a good start for the Huntsville group. Montgomery, the Montgomery location, that's the third location, they're looking for funding to start with theirs, but we think that we're going to be moving forward one way or another, and we'll be looking for whatever support we can get. On a second note, we did get a Bureau of Justice Assistant grant that goes along kind of tandem with this. It wasn't meant to be, it just happened to come in. In January 20, before COVID-19, Altapoint wrote for a grant with the city of Mobile to provide support for justice-involved individuals through the creation of an in-home treatment team aimed at targeting specific issues leading to multiple arrests for populations of high utilizers of law enforcement and emergency services. Additionally, the grant provides for training for law enforcement officers within the Mobile Police Department and sheriff's officers on recognizing and responding to mental health crisis, and for us to be co-responders to those crises whenever an officer goes out to the community. This program will work jointly with the crisis diversion center that I just mentioned. And so this is really what we've been looking for, we've been waiting for that big service area that was in the crack of the continuum of care that we have not had in the state of Alabama, and so we're very excited about that and bringing the news to you, and also giving us an opportunity to thank you for your support. If there's any questions, I'll certainly take some.
I just want to say, congratulations. This was great news. You mentioned the continuum of care and mental health, and I know that this was an area that certainly, that we and the rest of the state have been lacking for some time now. And so I'm very happy to hear this. Thank you for being here today to share the information with us, and we look forward to watching this take shape here. Do you know, when, did you say, when construction might possibly begin, or is it contingent on the funding?
Well, it's, I think the funding, we're going to find the funding one way or another. I mean, I think this is just too critical, and to be able to have the contract means that we'll go out on a limb to do the funding, but our temporary location opens up on March 1st, and we feel like we're probably in a two-year timeframe to have the facility built. Also, I did want to mention that this contract really covers seven counties. About 80% of the services will be utilized by Mobile County recipients. The other counties that will be included are Baldwin, Washington, Monroe, Escambia, Kaneka, and I think one other county, and I can't remember what that is, but anyway, so there's seven counties, most of those are rural, and Mobile County is where we're going to actually put this center.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Turk. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Here are none. Mr. Kirk, our agenda, please.
Number one, approve minutes of the regular meeting of September 28, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve an investment purchase of county funds by the treasurer for October 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve payment of claims for the home program in conjunction with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve EFP contract with Hollinger's Island Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $9,395.42 from District III funds for COVID-19 sanitation and disinfectant supplies.
Commissioner, would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve EFP contract with Baker High School Parent Teacher Association in the amount of $20,000 from District III funds for improvements to the athletic department.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve a mending EFP annual contract with Chickasaw Public Library doing business as Anna Pullen Smallwood Memorial Library to provide additional funds of $15,000 from District I funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve a mending EFP annual contract with Pritchard Public Library to perform additional funds, to provide additional funds of $13,500 from District I funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve a lease amendment with the United States of America for office space at the John Archer Agricultural Center for the United States Department of Agriculture to extend lease period from November 16, 2020, through December 31, 2023. This lease will extend the same terms as the current lease, except for some added cleaning and disinfectant requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, adopt resolution authorizing request of the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, accept grant subsidy award for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 from the Alabama Department of Youth Services in the amount of $115,175 for at least one detention bed for Mobile County for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
So moved.
Second.
Can you hold on? Am I the only one hearing things?
No, I think there was some chatter out in the lobby. You may have been hearing that.
Maybe I watched too much Star Trek this weekend.
What exactly are you hearing?
I heard it also, so I don't feel bad.
Okay. That makes you feel better. All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Number 12, approve work order number six, win internet access master services agreement with Unity Fiber for purchases of 12 three-year Cisco licenses and upgrades in the amount of $15,448.40 for the license commissioner's office.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve CDP contract with Hartsock Consulting LLC in the amount of $50,000 to be used to create, launch, and maintain and invent connection platform from District I funds.
Commissioner, I have some comments and questions about that particular item, and I appreciate you sending me the scope of work yesterday evening. And I realize that this is commissioned district funds, and certainly, there's reciprocal respect for the direction of those funds for any respective district, but the amount on the contract kind of caught my attention, and I realize, in reading the information, that this is centered around creating a website, a design, and maintaining that website, and I was just, I'm wondering, it seems like a large amount of money. I didn't know if you had explored other public agencies that do media platform services and maybe did some comparative pricing on that, because this, you know, in a lot of ways, it seems to replicate what we already have with Dogwood Media. Now, and I realize that this is specifically for District I, is it not?
Actually, it's not specifically for District I. It is a portal where any organization within the county group that has an event that's going on, that it will go, they'll have an opportunity to upload that event to this platform, and then... to this platform, and then, and then it will be publicized. So what we're trying to do is create a, kind of a place where people can go to find out what's happening in Mobile, wherever you live, and it won't be, it's being funded by District One, but this is something that I keep hearing people saying, well, you know, a lot of things I don't find out about until it's over. And so this would, whether it's the pecan festival, you know, down south, whether it's Sims Festival of Flowers, whatever it is, but it will go in, and people will know that this is the site where I can go to find out what's happening this weekend, they can find the free stuff, and it's not what Dogwood does for us, and I think part of the heavy lift here is first, they got to establish it, they've got to, they got to create it, and then publicize it, and then as events come in, they're going to have to screen them to make sure that it's the kind of thing that we want to put out there, and they just got to, I mean, they will just be managing it from now. But in answer to your question, I didn't seek any other amounts. This is a group with which I'm familiar, and that's why I approached them and asked them, would they take a look at this project? And this is actually the original project. I had to say, no, I'm sorry, we can't do that. So this is the, the scaled back version to see if we could, if we could make this work, and I was hoping to look at it for a year to see if people subscribe, if they actually use it, whether it does what I think it'll do, and then if it does, then, you know, we would look at another year, but you could also, long-term, what I'm hoping is that it will attract its own advertising and then begin to pay for itself. But the first year out, it just doesn't seem, seem to be able to do that. So that's, that's as far as I know.
I totally respect what you're trying to do and support that as far as having a central place to access the information. I think Visit Mobile has set up something similar. I just want, I want to make sure that we're not replicating something that's already there. On the county's new website that was set up, I know that there is a section, a domain that we actually purchased, visitmobilecounty.com, that hasn't been updated in like five years. So I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to use this service and incorporate that into what we already have in existence with our own, you know, so that we don't have two completely separate websites, that it can be accessed under the county's website, using Hartzog potentially to do that? And what I would ask this morning, because I'm, you know, this has all kind of just come to my attention here in the last couple of days, could we hold this over and explore that as a possibility of trying to incorporate what our existing site with the services that you're looking to include on this other site? That's what, that would be my recommendation, I think, this morning, just looking over the information and getting a little more specificity. That would be the other thing on these contract services and what exactly would be provided, because I know we've got one word, it's denoted in functionality, you know, very simply, but to get a little bit better understanding, if, so that would be my recommendation.
I don't have any problem with holding it over, but I don't think, well, this is not the first time I've brought this up, and I just, I'm just convinced that unless you have someone who is looking at doing this every day, out there scouting out the events to make sure they get there, make it to this event platform, that that won't happen. And our, our IT staff is just, that's not what they do. And that's why I decided, okay, let's, let's try it this way to see what we can do, but like I said, I don't mind any particular questions you have.
We could maybe incorporate both.
Any particular questions you have, I'm happy to hold it over for time to get those questions answered.
Okay, well, I would appreciate that. I will make the motion to hold over.
And I'll second.
Item number 14, approve a CCP contract with Delta Flooring, Inc. for 2023-year flooring covering, replacement installation at Mobile County facilities in the amount of $250,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve EFP contract with Mobile Creole Cultural and Historical Preservation in the amount of $3,500 to create and produce a documentary in honor of National Creole Heritage Month from District I funds.
So moved.
Second.
And number 16, we have a change. Instead of administrator title, there will be title of secretary, and read as follows. Approve appointment of Danny Moore as District III Secretary effective December 12th, 2020.
Would, is it not the prerogative of the commission to change, or is this because it's legislated in state law, that, because they function as district administrators, they are much more than secretaries, and so we would have to change state law to change that, basically? Correct?
That's what, that's what the statute says. I will note, when Catherine was appointed by the commission, she was a secretary, but given the title, or private secretary, also known as district administrator for Commissioner Connie Hudson.
So we can appoint Danny Moore as secretary, but with, but with the title, with the commission as district administrator? Could we do that?
I think that's just a name change, so yes, ma'am.
Right. Well, let's, why don't we do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll make the motion to do that.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Number 17, approve adopting a resolution to increase the RSA contribution rates for current Tier One employees as specified by Act 2011-676 to be effective October 1st, 2021.
And just to comment on that, this was actually voted on at our last meeting. There was some, I understand that RSA required some certain language in the resolution, so that's to correct, this is housekeeping to correct that language. This, this action actually puts all of Tier One and Tier Two employees at parity, they're on the same level with their contributions, and those kinds, the increase to either is covered by the raise that will go into effect April 1st, a two and a half percent raise. It will actually more than cover this increase in the employees' tier contributions, and this will not go into effect until October, but the raises will go into effect April 1st. So I'll make that motion.
And I'll make a comment on this also, because it is a clerical repair, I believe, this was voted on before I was elected to office, and I'm going to abstain from that, but I do, I would like to go on record as saying that had I been here, I would have voted no on this, but I will abstain.
Second.
Number 18, approve professional services agreement with Bank of New York Mellon for the calculation of bond rebate reports in the amount of $3,000.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Third, I'll third.
You can do that every now and then if you like.
I'll third.
Number 19, approve amending contract with Spheryon Staffing Services to provide overtime payments to certain temporary polling technicians during the November 3rd, 2020 general election for probate court.
And I'd like to say thank you to Spheryon, they came to the rescue when we needed them most. So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve letter of intake with InstaCEI, Inc. relating to the use and testing of software as a service application for use in roadway construction, engineering, and inspection currently under development at no cost to the county.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, we'll be looking at bids. Before that, I understand we have Sam Houston present, who may be speaking on behalf of the full body scanner equipment item.
Good morning.
Really, I came prepared to answer questions regarding this piece of equipment. Couple of years ago, we had a number of instances of contraband being introduced into the jail, including weapons, drugs, it's a frequent problem. These are two of the biggest threats our officers and other inmates face. I think with this piece of equipment, it will significantly reduce the opportunities for the introduction of this contraband. It also provides added protection to our staff at intake and searching, and I think if we look at it from a legal perspective, just one incident of weapons or drugs being introduced into the jail, that could potentially cause serious injury or death, I think on the other side of that, for liability purposes, just one, if we can prevent one incident, this machine will pay for itself.
Anyone have any questions? I, thank you, thank you for coming, but I think we, we really, you know, seize any opportunity we can to work with the sheriff's department and make sure that we keep everybody safe. Thank you for coming down, though.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden, I have a question for you. With COVID-19, is, do these scanners have a temperature, way to read the temperature of inmates as they come in?
Yes, it's sort of like a accessory add-on to a, to a car, if you want to make an analogy. Yes, it does have the capability of providing instantaneous temperature reads. Thank you.
Anything else? No. I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 21, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve appointing the following individuals to the Mobile County Soccer Complex Advisory Council, Danny Cordy, Chip Curtis, Sherry Dial, Chad Harrelson, Louis Jimenez, Philippe Lavelle, and Jamie Ward.
And I would just mention, I think both of you received information on these individuals, and they were all, other than Danny Cordy, who is ex officio, he'll serve as an ex officio, they were recommended by people within the soccer community, and some of these names were on several lists, so it's people that, the people in the soccer community have confidence in to kind of represent their thoughts and ideas and concerns, and so, and the council is strictly advisory, so they will just meet on a quarterly basis and, and help with providing information to AFC as well as the Mobile County Commission if we request it, and I think it just brings the community to the table. That's the purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Number 23, consider approving amending the 2015 Capital Improvement Plan to add a project and revise the estimated cost as follows. Unnamed District I Parks and Recreation Expansion, $0. ACE Theater Restoration, $65,237.72. This amendment creates project ACE Theater Restoration in the amount of $60,000, $65,237.72, and real allocates that amount from unnamed District I Parks and Recreation Expansion.
So moved.
Second.
Number 24, recommend approving construction agreement with the state of Alabama for construction of ADA-compliant curb ramps at various locations in the unincorporated areas of Mobile County. The funding will be $200,000 in federal funds with a $50,000 county match for each project.
So moved.
Second.
Number 25, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for SNR Road, Small Road, and Mavaco Loop Road West, Great Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with Neil Schaefer, Inc. for McFarland Road from 1/10 mile north of Old Pascagoula Road to Three Notch Kroner Road for additional environmental work required by the Alabama Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, recommend approving amendment number two to professional services agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc. for Mobile County Soccer Complex Phase Two for the design and construction administration of shade structures and benches, also authorizing the president of the commission to execute the amendment to the contract on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Number 28, recommend approving the application for Rebuild Alabama Act Annual Grant Program Funds through the Alabama Department of Transportation in the amount of $250,000 for Glass Road, Great Drain Basin Pave. No local matches required.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, 29, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from the following property owners for the following projects. McDavid Road, Track 3, McDavid Road, Track 4.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, recommend approving an agreement for traffic light preemption equipment installation between the City of Sims and Mobile County Commission for the following intersections currently maintained by the County of Mobile. Wolf Road at Snow Road North, Howells Ferry Road at Snow Road North, Schillinger Road North at Silver Pine Road. Within the agreement, the City of Sims agrees to indemnify, defend, and save harmless Mobile County, its officers, agents, servants, and employees. Also authorize the president of the commission to execute, to execute the agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
31, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Glaze Road, Nelson Road, and Rainy Drive, Great Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Pine Grove Estates.
So moved.
Second, second.
Number 33, recommend approving final plat of Chaparral Subdivision and accepting road rights of way as shown in the subdivision plat for the following street, Chaparral Court, and accept the road in the subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with the drainage system as it affects said road, and accept the warranty deed for the rights of ways indicated on this plat.
So moved.
Second.
Number 34, recommend approving that Grand Farms Road West continue in the program for acceptance, maintenance, and regulation of certain unimproved roads in accord, in accord with Act 2019-307, and be granted one additional year to complete all requirements set out in the act for acceptance into the county road maintenance system. This, the report from the county engineer pertaining to Grand Farms Road West was accepted by the county commission March 23rd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number 35, recommend approving that Ralph Latham Road continue in the program for acceptance, maintenance, and regulation of certain unimproved roads in accord with Act 2019-307, and be granted one additional year to complete all requirements set out in the act for acceptance into the county road maintenance system. The report from the county engineer pertaining to Ralph Latham Road was accepted by the county commission March 23rd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number 36, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 11 in the amount of $5,000 for Barlow Road and Havens Road, Great Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 37, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreements for Track 15 in the amount of $250, and Track 51 in the amount of $585 for Joyce Circle Lloyd Road and Williams Road, Great Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 38, recommend adopting resolution setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets. Palestine Road, 30 miles per hour from Howells Ferry Road to end of maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Number 39, recommend assigning a contract for real estate appraisal services on an ASD. Recommend assigning a contract for real estate appraisal services on an as-needed basis to McDade Valuation and Consulting LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we do have two add-ons. The first agenda add-on, number one. Approve termination of Get It Done janitorial contract with Mobile County Revenue Commissioner's Office effective immediately. You'll notice that we changed the word from bid to contract in that item.
So moved.
I have one question, or is this company doing any other janitorial services for any other facilities in the county? I'm sorry, I should have asked that earlier, but...
I, I don't know, Mr. Dewitt. It's a good question, I will check.
Okay. Second.
The final item is to, is related to sending a letter to our congressmen and senators to ask for their assistance in having a federal declaration for Hurricane Zeta. That item can read, I believe everybody has a copy of that letter.
Right, I, I gave out the copies. If you just kind of bring everybody up to speed at this point with what you shared with me a little bit earlier, you know, where this stands as far as what the costs are and, and the portion that federal normally pays and local pays, and if, if for whatever reason, we don't receive that declaration, and I don't know why we wouldn't, because we've met the threshold, so I assume right now it's just a matter of timing, but I'll let you kind of...
Certainly. As it relates to Hurricane Zeta, it's my understanding that in Mobile County, including the municipalities, we have an excess of about $12 million. Statewide, we're exceeding $20 million, and that easily exceeds the thresholds required for a federal declaration.
That's the damage.
For the damage, yeah.
For the damage.
The dollar amount of the damages.
Right.
Just to put it in perspective, generally, you only have to have about 1.5, 1.6 million in Mobile County. It's based on population. Statewide is also based on population, and you have to have a little over 7.5 million, I believe. So we're easily exceeding those damage values for a declaration. But as of yet, a declaration has not been issued. So we were looking for a way to encourage getting that done, and a letter to our congressmen and senators seems to be the next step in that.
So as it stands now, we, we have, we have recommended to our county constituents that if they have any debris as a result of Hurricane Zeta, that they put it on the right-of-way. So I'm assuming that they've all done that, and they're still waiting, and, and I just wanted to make it very clear to everybody that at this point in time, this is not a reluctance on behalf of the county to engage our disaster services to pick up this debris, that we are still waiting on this declaration, because if, if we were to move ahead and pick this up right now, is, is there, is there a risk that, that we would not get the fund, the reimbursement for this? I mean, I, I want to make sure I understand this.
There, there is some risk, and just to put things in a little bit of perspective of what order or magnitude we're dealing with, the consultant and our contractor have, have both looked at estimates of what the debris cost could be as it relates to Hurricane Zeta, and the number seems to be about $2 million. Now, if we have full reimbursement from that, that would result from a declaration from FEMA, at least for Hurricane Sally, federal reimbursement was 75%, and state reimbursement was 12.5%. So that left the county being responsible for covering 12.5% of that amount. So if we waited for the declaration, and we waited for the guidance that would come along from that, and we knew exactly how to approach the debris cleanup, we would only be stuck with about 12.5% of those costs.
Versus 100%.
Versus 100% if we stepped wrong. And there is some concern, and our, even our consultant has asked us to, to tread lightly on that, because there's a few different ways that FEMA has approached a situation in which we have overlapping storms, and how FEMA decides to move forward with guidance as it relates to the overlapping storms changes how we move forward. And we don't want to get too far down the road and do too much and put that reimbursement in jeopardy, is, is the concern. It's, it's, the risk is there, and, and we're reaching a pretty large dollar amount associated with it if, if we step wrong.
So all we can do at this point is ask our constituents to be patient. The county has done everything it can possibly do, the state has done everything it can do, we are waiting on this federal mandate, and, and that's why we're, we're reaching out to our federal legislators to try to get their help and support to make this happen sooner as opposed to later.
Absolutely. I do want to point out that the governor submitted the request for the declaration very early in the process, so the, the local municipalities all reacted quickly to get that dollar amount in, the state reacted quickly, and as you said, it's in the hands of the federal government now.
So I think we should, probably from our offices, it would be a good idea, in addition to this letter, to follow up with some phone calls as well.
I have a question about the debris cleanup, and I guess if you, you never ask questions, you never learn, but when you have two storms so close together, how are we determining Sally from Zeta debris? And how are we differentiating the two? Because I'm getting, I mean, just in my few weeks, I'm getting a tremendous amount of calls about debris still in front of people's homes from Sally, so why is that not being picked up? And another question I have, too, that can be addressed at a later date, is concerning our retain, our retain, I guess we have a retainer, a contract retainer with DRC, and I'm just curious as to why we use an out-of-state contractor when we have probably one of the top five contractors located right here in, in Mobile County? If you can answer those questions.
Well, we have the contract we have because we participated in the ACCA statewide contract, and we were supporting them, and they set the contract, and DRC was the winner for this region.
Was it an economy of scale, was it not? I mean, because of the, of ACCA and all of its governmental groups agreeing to that, we got a much better price? That was my understanding.
Exactly. There, there are some limitations within that contract as far as how we can encourage the contractor to step up the scale of operation, so in some degree, we're limited. The contractor did indicate to me on Friday that their plan is to be done with Hurricane Sally, what, what is obvious Hurricane Sally debris by Thanksgiving, and then we'll be left to address Hurricane Zeta. I'm sure we'll have some issues, and obviously, the public, if, if they feel that they put out Hurricane Sally debris and it's not hooked, it's not been picked up, we can get the contractor to come back. But in general, they should be, the term is substantially complete by Thanksgiving for Hurricane Sally.
With Sally, but how do they determine, now that people are piling debris up from Zeta, how are they determining what was there and what was not unless they did some sort of assessment before Zeta?
Yeah, and, and truly, the people that are, the, the most questionable is that West Mobile population. The hurricanes hit in very different regions of the county, and so in the south part of the county, it's generally considered Sally.
Sally.
In the north part of the county, it will be generally considered Zeta.
Okay.
And it, but there is some overlap in West Mobile, and that's why we would really like some guidance, and probably why it's somewhat slowed down in West Mobile, is because there is concern about stepping wrong. Paperwork has to be completely right to get the reimbursement done. If there's any question, it could delay it or disallow it altogether. So we, we really are trying to step well in this process.
Is FEMA going to make the ultimate call, the demarcation between the two? Is that going to be a FEMA call?
Well, that, FEMA will give us guidance on how to proceed, whether it be regionally, whether it be before a date, if you picked it up, it was Sally, after that date, if you picked it up countywide, it would be Zeta. But that, without that guidance, we don't know what the rules are and how to play within those rules. So it could be regional, it could be date, it could be some other method that we don't know yet, to delineate between the two storms.
Any other questions, comments? And the DRC, that is a bid, right? When we do, when...
Yes.
ACCA does, it's...
When ACCA, they, they do it on a bid, and they do it on a regional basis.
Do they bring their workers from, their employees from out of town, or are they local? Do you know that?
You know, DRC used to be a local company, and there are some still people that live locally that are, that are working. But the reality is, the way these operations work, at least, I would say, 80% of the trucks running are actually out of region, no matter who you get. And so it, it is nice to have local people that are running the operation, and certainly that could be a benefit, not, not discounting that at all, but a, a large portion of the workforce are transient, and...
Did, did I make the motion yet? To approve the letter? So moved.
Second.
Any, any closing comments?
Okay. Item number 41. Approve request for motion to adjourn until November 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.